Okay, welcome everybody to the Bellevue City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, April fourth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would stand for that and then remain standing for the invocation. Father Tom Jones with the Church of the Holy Spirit at thirteen oh five Thomas Drive is here with us.
Let us pray. Almighty God, to whom we must account for all our powers and privileges, send down upon those who hold office in our city council, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. Open their hearts to hear the concerns of those they represent, guide them so that they may make wise decisions, and enable them through steadfast purpose to faithfully serve in their office and promote the well-being of all people. We ask this, we ask all this through him who makes all things possible. Amen.
Thank you, Father Jones. I will call the meeting to order. And Shirley, would you take roll call, please?
Yes, Councilman Casey. Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
Councilman, or Councilman Welch. Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda consent agenda claims and advisory committee reports five A approval of the agenda. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Sorry, give me one second. Thank you. You may vote. All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item five B approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where the item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the motion?
Motion by Burns, second by Preister.
Thank you. All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. And item seven, special presentations. We have a special evening this evening. We have a proclamation for the Bellevue West Class A State Basketball Champions, which are all here in the crowd, it looks like. I want to congratulate you with that and going to give you a proclamation. City of Bellevue, Nebraska, Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas the two thousand twenty-two twenty-three Bellevue West Boys Basketball Team wins its sixth state basketball title in the program's history. And whereas the Thunderbirds beat Millard North sixty-four to forty-one in the championship game behind another strong defensive effort and a balanced scoring attack and saw four Thunderbirds finish the game in double figures and whereas this year's Thunderbird Basketball Team will go down as one of the best in Nebraska's state high school history. They gave up only forty-eight point four points per game and outscored teams by a combined seven hundred and fifty-nine points this season on their way to a twenty-nine and oh season. And whereas all the hard work and dedication from the player and coaches led to an undefeated season, which ended up being a perfect way to send Coach Doug Woodard out as he announced his retirement after the game after twenty-five years as the coach of the Thunderbirds. Coach Woodard will also go down as one of the best of all time in the state of Nebraska with an overall record of six hundred and ninety-three to two hundred and fifty-six, with four hundred and sixty-three of those wins coming at Bellevue West, along with seven state championships overall, and more importantly, he positively affected the lives of many students, players, and coaches.
How many state championships did he win?
Uh, says seven here.
He won seven state champions? State championships? Seriously?
Yeah.
Wow. You would think he'd be able to answer that. Seven state championships.
Seven, yeah, that's a lot of practice.
Now we know what he can do during his retirement.
It's not real typical, but. And, and whereas the state champion Thunderbirds, Jacob Arope, Kona Fern, Jackson Stewie, Josh High, Dylan Bullion, Isaiah McMorris, Eldon Turner, C J Goff, Rammel Woodard, Trey Perea, Stephen Polacek, Jaden Jackson, Josiah Dotzler, Robbie Garcia, O'Neil Amununia, and along with Coach Doug Woodard, assistant coaches Steve Klein, Matthew Lauritsen, Mike Jenkins, Jason Sanderson, Scott Blackwell, Matt Henry, support staff Kerry DeJong, Chris Crockeram, Shannon Geier, and Jeremy Langer have made the entire Bellevue community proud. Now therefore, I, Mayor Rusty Height of Bellevue, Nebraska, do hereby urge the citizens of Bellevue to recognize the merits of the staff and team to congratulate them all for a job well done. So if I get you guys to come up front and I'll hand each a.
Mayor, you're gonna come up here and we'll have Lisa just go up one at a time and we won't make them read all the names again.
I hope I don't lose close.
Just, yeah, let's go ahead. You want to go around, go circle around and shake their hands?
Welcome back.
You guys are all coming back, right? So if we could have the council come out too, we'll take a picture right here.
I hear you're taking a slice.
Uh, don't. Stewie Dotzler. At least three of their first strings. Well, leaving. Okay, and thanks to Lisa Rybar for getting that all ready for us as well. Item eight organizational matters, none this evening. Item nine, approved citizen communication. We did not receive any request to be heard. Number ten liquor licenses, ten A recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. The approval of the application for Lynn G. Trimpie as the new manager for Industrial Social Hall Inc. doing business as Knights Event Center at ten twenty-one Lincoln Road, Bellevue. And I will open up that application for public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak regarding the liquor license application? Please come forward if there is. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission the approval of the application for Lynn G. Trimpie as a new manager for Industrial Social Hall Inc. doing business as Knights Event Center at ten twenty Lincoln Road, Bellevue.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item eleven ordinances for adoption. Third reading, we have none this evening. Item twelve ordinances for public hearing, second reading. Twelve A an ordinance, or twelve A ordinance number four one one seven, an ordinance to update the compensation ordinance for seasonal employees. And Shirley, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one one seven, an ordinance of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, classifying the employees of the city, fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees, providing a pay range schedule, providing for publication in pamphlet form, repealing ordinance number four one one four, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, and I will open up twelve A for public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak regarding twelve A? If so, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Third reading will be April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. Item twelve B ordinance number four one one eight, request to vacate the plat of lots one and two here and there addition. Applicants for First City Development LLC, John Jungers, and the David and Ruth here revocable trust, general location two three zero four Lincoln Road. Uh, okay, Shirley, would you read that ordinance, please?
Yes, ordinance number four one one eight, an ordinance to vacate the plat of lots one and two here and there addition, located at or about two three zero four Lincoln Road, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Okay, the notes just say staff request to be third reading, but we're gonna, we're not doing that this evening, I guess. Per staff. Thank you. Shirley, twelve B is open for public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak regarding twelve B ordinance number four one one eight? Please come forward. Anyone wanting to speak regarding ordinance number four one one eight? Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. So the third reading will be April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. Item thirteen ordinances for introduction. First reading thirteen A ordinance number four one one nine, request to rezone lots one four three Nob Hill from BG to RS eighty-four for the purpose of an existing single-family residence. Applicant Chris Lake Properties LLC, general location six oh eight North Hill Terrace. And Shirley, would you read that ordinance, please?
Yes, ordinance number four one one nine, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article Three of ordinance number four one zero four by changing the zone classification of land located at or about six zero eight Nob Hill Terrace, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Second reading and public hearing will be April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. Item thirteen B ordinance number four one two zero, request to rezone lot one D Pleasant Hill or Martin subdivision from RS seventy-two to BG for the purpose of a daycare center. Applicant Twins Daycare LLC, general location seven nine five two South Twenty-Fifth Street. Shirley, would you read that ordinance, please?
Yes, ordinance number four one two zero, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article Three of ordinance number four one zero four by changing the classification of land located at or about seven nine five two South Twenty-Fifth Street, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Second reading and public hearing will be April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. We have none this evening. Fifteen resolutions, fifteen A. Resolution number two zero two three dash zero eight, a resolution approving the expenditures of Sanitary Improvement District number two forty-three Clearwater Falls for park improvements in the amount of three hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and five cents. And do I have a motion? Councilman Burns.
I move that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero eight.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if we have a rep here or not. No? Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, motion by Burns, second by McCaw. Any further comments or questions? All right, please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item fifteen B, resolution number two zero two three dash zero three, condemning the structures at sixteen oh seven Franklin Street, Bellevue, Nebraska. Start with a motion, I guess, and we'll go to discussion. Somebody want to make a motion? Council, Councilman Burns.
I move that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero three.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by McCaw, discussion. Mike, would you want to come up? We've got some questions for you.
Good evening, everyone.
Start a report on what you know.
Questions or I have a few pictures of some of the progress that he's made.
Let's see the pictures. Let's see the progress in pictures.
So this is the rear deck and stairway on sixteen oh seven Franklin on the back that has passed inspection today. The siding is all been replaced on the south side and meets current code. Go on to the next two, please. The stairs on the front on the left, they had some riser issues this morning, so he was in the midst of repairing that when that photo was taken and it has been completed by the end of the day. The garage has been removed on the south side behind sixteen oh seven. There's still some cleanup that needs to be done as far as the foundation area.
Is he leaving that pad and?
I think he wants to. Uh, we're working through that right now. Temporarily. The one on the left is the secondary garage that had a foundation failure. It's been repaired. That's more cosmetic, structurally sound. The wall has been slugged and rebarred inside. That'll have to be taken care of at the finish of paint, et cetera. The soffits are still in need of repair. Um, the one on the right and on to the next two, please. Along with some other areas of the soffit and obviously the paint's peeling. This is all part of the city ordinances for corrections that need to be still to be made.
Is that all the pictures?
That's it.
Uh, what date did we give him to get sixteen oh seven done by?
He thought he could have the entire outside done by March thirty-first.
So he's, he's beyond that timeframe now?
Yes.
Um, in your, so in your opinion, it's just the soffits and the the remaining siding that's out of compliance?
Yeah, see, I mean, he's made progress to that point. He's gonna need a few more days to address this decayed soffit issues. There's gonna be prep work, you know, to get the uh, structure ready for painting and caulking and, you know, sealing it up. So, you know, cosmetically in a craftsmanship type way.
Councilman Burns.
Mike, but those are just the only two things and then I'm, I'm not familiar with you know, the process of going through this. So approximately how, how much time would it, you know, on average take to, to complete those two items?
I mean, if you got a crew on it within, you know, a week, weeks worth of work, you know, three, four guys out there, a painting crew and uh, started out caulking, prepping, they could possibly complete the painting portion. That'd be after the soffit repairs.
Okay, so you, in about a week's time, it could be completed roughly?
If, if you put the manpower to it.
Okay.
So is this property, um, leasable once this is done? Is it?
The inside is is habitable. It's dated, as I stated in one of the previous council meetings. It is habitable, it's just dated.
But he technically could get an occupancy permit if he gets these items done, these soffits.
This particular property has received an occupancy permit in the past. It's never been taken away. Uh, it just was unfit for human occupation or based on the means of egress, the the safety means of egress in and out were all deteriorated and rotten, and that's what the replacement of the stairs on the front and the back were necessary.
Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, when I look at these pictures, um, and the comment you just made, would this house be able to be occupied today?
Everything that was presented at the time of unfit for human occupation was all the ordinances rolled into one condemnation. So in order to clear this, he would have to correct all the corrections that were in that initial notification.
Did he ask you, you know, did, I'm assuming you were out there today or yesterday?
Yes, these, these pictures are from today, actually.
And, and what type of filling did you get from the owner as far as moving forward on this?
Uh, the owner was actually not present at the time that I was there, but he was in and out of the property today because his tools were there. I did not speak with the owner today.
I don't know how bad this soffit is if, if it's just this one corner. I guess my thought is he's done a lot of work. I think I've seen houses like this and probably worse that are probably being occupied if we're just looking at this here.
I would agree.
So I guess I'm asking for some guidance from you.
I mean, we've come this far. I would think that we would give him the timeframe to get this painted and see where we stand in a couple of weeks.
Okay, so.
Could we amend the motion?
How do we amend or how do we go backtrack?
Vote.
Well, I guess I'm more asking legal. How do we?
Can we make an amendment to table?
I'll pull my second. All right, I seconded, did I?
No, McCaw, but.
I think I did.
You got an easy way you want to do it, or you?
Well, I think we can just.
Can we amend this?
I think you can amend that motion to, or you can amend the move to amend the resolution to continue it to a date certain.
So which would be what is thirty days?
I think that would be to the May second meeting.
So does somebody want to make an amendment to uh, continue this resolution to?
Make a, somebody can make a motion to continue resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero three uh, to be considered at the May second meeting.
Councilman Burns.
My real quick question is, is if my question is, is if, I mean, can we just vote no? I mean, do we feel like this was, I feel like there were some good faith efforts made and am I, I mean, Councilman, Council President Cook did just make a really good point. There, there probably are worse structures at this point. You know, if that's all we're looking at. And I mean, I wonder if we just
just vote this down and, and, you know what I mean? And I, I do think that
I do think that he made some really good faith efforts and I think he's done most of the work and I don't know if you concur with that, but.
Well, I my thought is if we vote on this and we vote no, it's not being condemned, do we still want the gentleman, the owner, to come back in front of us or do we just put it in Mike's hands? I mean, I don't want to start, I guess I don't want to start back from scratch. So how do we, how do we, if we come back in a month and he's done nothing, I mean, I hate to I, I think he's gonna get it fixed, but how, how do we want a conclusion? Do we put it on Mike? Mike goes out there and specs it and he doesn't come back to us, or does he need to come back to us, which I think he should because we got involved in it. I mean, he had a chance to fix it just dealing with Mike and it wasn't done. I still think we need to come back and make a motion. So I think we need to somehow get out of this and make it continuance to May second.
Okay.
Councilman Prester.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would concur with that. I think we've started down this road. We've given timelines, we've gotten follow-up. I, I think just voting it down now and leaving it is not demonstrating good faith on our part. So I think the appropriate thing is the amended motion be made to continue it and then we get the final updates. Yes, it's a little bit longer than, but this deadline was actually the owner's deadline. He said he could have it done. And we're, we're close. I see good faith effort, but there is still some to go and I'm willing to give him that time, but I do want to still have accountability. So I would like to see and if we need to have him appear here.
I, Mayor, I, I don't want to vote on this to say not condemn it because then and then say continue. Why can't we just, I don't know who, I know Thomas, Mr. Burns made the motion and kidding. Jerry, that's who I thought. If, if we could back out of that and then just make a motion, continue it to May second.
Just withdraw the motion.
We're perfectly fine to do that. So if you.
Yeah, I'll withdraw my, I, I withdraw my motion.
You want to withdraw yours?
Second.
Second, and then you'll withdraw your motion.
Correct.
Yes.
Does anybody want to make a new motion?
Yep, and you said May.
Second.
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 Personally, I would like to see the resolution stay in place.
It is.
All these violations were rolled into one violation uh, in the latter. So I'd like to see that completed one hundred percent. Uh, in the letter, so I'd like to see that completed one hundred percent.
Okay.
Before we back away from that.
How would I, are we just continuing?
Motion to continue, resolution to continue.
I, I just moved, moved to continue this to the, um, I need the date again, I apologize.
May second.
I move to continue this, uh, to May second, to the May second city council meeting.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister to continue resolution number two zero two three dash zero three to the May second meeting. And, uh, just, uh, expecting the property to be complete at that time, so. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item fifteen C, resolution number two zero two three dash zero nine authorized the city of Bellevue's participation in the national opioid settlements with Tiva, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens and Walmart. Do you have motion? Councilman Cook?
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero nine.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by McCaw. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, item sixteen, current business sixteen A, update from Mike Christensen. Chief Building Inspector on the progress of bringing the dwellings at sixteen eleven Franklin Street back into habitable, habitable, habitable code compliance.
As I had stated at the, uh, March seventh council meeting, um, the property is up for sale and there has been no further progress with the renovations or completion of this, uh, particular structure. This is a picture from the initial notification process and, um, the council meeting two months ago. Uh, the interior's never been finished, this has never received a certificate of occupancy and remains as such. There's still some other issues on the exterior also that still need to be repaired. And it's, it's not moving forward at this time, it's up, it's up for sale.
Do we know if it's, uh, sold or contracted?
I talked to one person, a potential buyer on the phone here about, uh, a week ago, and that's the only person I've talked to.
Okay, so. Any questions, Councilman Cook?
Mike, it seemed like, what, did, did we give this property a longer date, like six months out?
We did because of the interior needed to be completed and all the cabinets, trim, trim work, everything to bring it into habitable form. It was extended further, yes.
And today is just for the update?
Today is an update, correct?
Thank you.
That resolution had been pushed to May second also.
Any other questions? Thanks, Mike. Sixteen B, approved and authorized the mayor to sign the agreement with Commonwealth Electric Company for Thirty-Sixth Street and Blind Avenue Traffic Si- Signal and ADA modifications in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-six cents. Plus a ten percent contingency of thirteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars for a total project cost of one hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-six cents, do you have motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen B.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, sixteen C, approved and authorized the mayor to sign the agreement with Ernest Construction Group Inc. For the two thousand twenty-three concrete projects in an amount not to exceed six hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-five cents plus a ten percent contingency of sixty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents. For the total project cost of six hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eight cents, do you have motion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll move to approve item sixteen C as you just read.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by McCaw, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, item sixteen D, approved and authorized the mayor to sign the community development block grant sub-recipient agreement with Lipton Sarpy. For the Bellevue Community Assistance Program in an amount not to exceed seventy-two thousand, five hundred dollars, do you have motion? Councilman Burns?
I move to approve item sixteen D.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, item sixteen E, approved and authorized the mayor to sign a settlement agreement with Sarpy County and Sarpy County Treasurer to settle, resolve and dispose of issues related to the pilot litigation in an amount not to exceed five hundred and seven thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents, do you have motion? Councilman Cook?
Or, or, oh geez, I'm lost.
Sixteen E.
Sixteen E.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, item seventeen, administration reports, comments must be limited to the items on the current reports, march report attached to the packet, any comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor, I, I just asked Mr. Resto if he would comment on the last two items of his report. The meetings with Congressman Flood. One was on the VA and hospital and the other one was on electric vehicles.
Yep, so Congressman Flood, and Ken can probably speak to it too, um, had an interest in the EV that we had in our police department. So he came down, got to, uh, take a ride with the mayor and the chief. He also brought along his aide who, um, was out of Norfolk, so to spread the word to other communities about this, get a good feel on how these EVs are working and how it's working out for us, so it was a pretty good meeting with him. Secondary that the VA was still in motion, um, they're pushing to go to Seventy-second and Giles. And we've had Flood's office engaged with trying to lobby that out and so far we haven't been very successful, so. Their lease runs out in twenty twenty-four, there was some word that they would, even if they relocated, they'd still coexist with us, but we haven't got a confirmation on that yet. So, um, we're not giving up on this, you have a lot of veterans that are served out of our community as well as Iowa. We've been working with the DAV too, who recognizes the people that come through as well as off it that use the clinic here. Kind of the inconvenience it'll put on our veterans to go to Seventy-second and Giles, but um, on the group out of DC, it's kind of falling on deaf ears, so, uh, we'll, we'll keep pushing Flood's office to get some resolution on that. But right now, it's, it's a struggle, so.
Okay, I appreciate the effort and the additional time going into it, cause I agree, it is very important to keep it here. Not only for the Iowa veterans, but for the veterans on this side of the river that are close. But it's also convenient for them to get access into it for parking, for finding it. Uh, it's, I've used it myself and it's a very good service and in a very good location. So hopefully we can get the attention of our contingency in Washington and they will make it happen, but.
We were prepared to offer some alternatives, um, based on their original request that they needed thirty thousand square feet. We're currently at ten thousand. We were looking at, uh, a piece of land right to the south of it, which we could expand to. Uh, the ownership of that land was prepared to donate that to us and then we would expand the twenty thousand square foot footprint to add to thirty. Then it came back that they didn't necessarily need thirty, they needed administrative space, we do have vacant space upstairs that we would have worked out a deal with, we had a pharmacy leave up there, um, as well as a defense contractor, which we've got some interest in that, but uh, we, we'd be able to slice off what they needed for the administrative and then it just kind of went dark on us, like, so we're getting conflicting and that's kind of what we're trying to get Flood to engage with us.
Good.
And if you do need thirty thousand, we do have an alternative, we literally had another proposal for another site for that thirty thousand, which they didn't feel was, uh, adequate for, but if we could expand ours, it'd be perfect and we just haven't really had any cooperation on that side, so we're not giving up, we've got some ideas that we're trying to throw out there to, at least. But if they've already signed off and are moving that way, then we're we're kind of up the creek without a paddle, but we're still working.
Good, and I'm glad Congressman Flood is helping with it and doing what he can on his end too, so, thank you.
I would just add Flood has been very responsive to our been very engaged in responses, so he is, he is helping, Councilman Burns?
Uh, City Administrator Resto, I just wanted to ask about the meeting with the Bellevue Housing Authority on affordable housing, I didn't know if you could maybe just tell us about that and, and I don't know if it's raw event. I know we kinda had a quick email exchange about, uh, the Affordable Housing Action Plan and the timeline, so I didn't know if maybe those two things were this meeting and that was related at all either, so.
It kind of is, Mr. Burns, so it was the combination of, we have the Affordable Housing Plan and then what is our next step? So it's, what do we wanna follow, I think if you remember when they came in and presented, they had, had ideas of adding staff to that to manage this. So we met with Carolyn to kind of talk through that and then potential for some additional sites and things along that lineup where that affordable housing could go, so it's just more of a, uh, I don't wanna, what's the word I wanna use, Mark, it was like a seeking out solutions for where we go forward as based on the plan, what we, what we're looking to do, correct?
Correct, and then I was part of the meeting as well, and then there was discussion about potentially partnering with, uh, some of our neighbors to the west, um, for this position, if you will, to, to work countywide. Uh, not just here in Bellevue, that's, that's my recollection of the conversation.
We felt that a position, if I recall right, the one position just strictly to manage Bellevue is like if there's going to be Papillion, La Vista and Gretna and Springfield involved in it, why not partner with the one individual working with all, all cities to come out with a common good here, so that's something Carolyn was gonna go back and look at and talk to the other communities too, see if there's a partnership there.
Okay, I appreciate that and I'm glad that we're taking some action steps on that too, so I appreciate the update, thanks.
Uh, while we're on the Bellevue Housing Authority, I did have a, um, uh, resignation, so there's an open spot on that. If anybody has anybody, uh, in mind, have them send a bio to myself or Lisa. Um, Jim Hawkins stepped down, he's been a, a, a force on that for a long time and he's, uh, he's been a great servant of Bellevue, so, um, he, I think he wants to spend a little more time doing other things right now, so we appreciate his work that he's done, but if anybody's interested, uh, please send them our way.
We lost him and we lost Paul Hartnett, so we lost a lot of history and very dedicated people, so.
Yep.
Yeah, we need to look, thank you.
Yep.
Mayor, hi, um, are you looking for just a resume and then maybe like a letter of recommendation?
Yeah, uh, somebody interested and then, and if, if they have a recommendation, that'd be awesome too.
Okay, cool.
I do have a couple of people that are thinking about it, but, but from old resumes.
Cool.
Any other questions? Alright, we'll file those, no closed session, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Councilman Preister?
Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by Burns, please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.